I would like to call to order the January 11th, 2018 meeting of the North Andover School Committee and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So just a reminder that this meeting is being recorded and silence your timing devices and other such items. First, we can start with any public comment. Seeing none, we'd love to have Ms. Caitlin Dolly come up for a student report. Happy New Year.
Thank you, you too. So we've kind of been getting back into the swing of things after having a really long weekend due to the storm.
You're welcome.
Thanks. And today there was actually the DECA conference and it was crazy how many kids were missing from the classes, but it's just really cool to see a club that's so diverse. Yesterday Scarlet and Black performed for the teachers and I heard it went very well. Mr. Van Horn came into our class today singing some of the songs, so I'd say it was pretty well-liked by the teachers. The Drama Guild has picked their Shakespeare production for this year and it's As You Like It, so that'll be a nice one to see. And Student Council is currently working on a staff basketball game, so it should be coming up, we should be doing it around March, so that's something to look forward to. And for Valentine's Day, clubs are starting to get ready to do their fundraisers. I know that there's going to be a carnation sale and I know that the Drama Guild is putting on Charlie Brown Valentine's Day for any families who are hoping to do something together and then there should be a Fuddruckers fundraiser afterwards. So a lot of cool getting ready for events with the hall with Valentine's Day coming up soon.
So just so you know, the concert was actually conducted by a visiting conductor from Uruguay.
Oh, I didn't even know that.
And so we have, if you remember Sarah Durkin last year in June went down and now we have flipped back and we have a visiting conductor from Uruguay who's working with students for about 10 days and teaching them traditional Uruguayan music. And there's actually gonna be a concert next week where all of the choruses sing and he's been conducting them. So they got a little sneak peek yesterday, so I was looking on my phone to make sure I got the right country. Rodrigo Faguga is the director in Uruguay. Pretty cool, huh?
Yeah.
Will you tweet that in advance?
Sure, I will. Yeah, it's exciting. So it's next week and...
Is it general public?
Yeah, he's gonna be, here, there's gonna be, next Thursday, from 4:30 to 8:15, there'll be a series of concerts, Scarlet and Black Concert Choir, then Treble Choir.
Seventeenth.
Yeah, the 11th, sorry. Sorry, 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 I meant, sorry. The concert is next Thursday, the 18th, I apologize. So Treble Choir, Concert Choir, and Scarlet and Black. I'll make sure I tweet something out about it. It's really exciting.
Yeah.
Pretty neat, huh?
Great.
That's about all I have.
Super. Thanks so much, Caitlin. Happy New Year to you.
Absolutely. Have a great night, you guys.
Enjoy the hangout tomorrow.
That's right. All right, so if we can move on to the consent agenda, we have a set of minutes to approve from, I think, the 21st, is that right?
Right.
Yes.
I will move that we present, that we approve the minutes as presented in the packet for December 21st, 2017.
A motion by Mr. McDevitt and a second by Ms. Witski Lynch. All of us in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Yep, okay. So 4:01. I think I heard everybody, right? Aye. Okay, great, thank you. And so for my report, I just want to tell everybody know, I think I've talked to most of you, that I have joined the OPEB, which is the Other Post-Employment Benefits Subcommittee, in place of Mr. Trissy, who ended up having some scheduling conflicts and we had an initial meeting last night and I'll let you know more about that when there's more to know.
Just lag on that. Actually, I really feel the test, I didn't spell it, that was the problem.
Happy to take that on. I'd also like to thank in advance Mr. Sherhard, who just came in from the Finance Committee, who will be here to be part of watching your presentation tonight. So that's some pressure, but I appreciate your support and being here, so thanks, Tim. And then I was gonna ask Ms. Picard if she could update our group on the Building Name Committee. As everybody knows, our Early Childhood Center is now going to grow to include a kindergarten facility as well, so Ms. Picard, if you could tell us about that a little bit?
I will. We have five people who have agreed to serve on that Subcommittee. They are Phil DeColigero, who is on our Board of Selectmen, he's a parent of a preschooler and a kindergartner, and he's a North Andover Public Schools graduate. Mark Svensson will be on the committee, he's a North Andover Historical Society member, he's a teacher, and he is a graduate of North Andover Public Schools. We have Megan O'Neil, who is a former ECC PTO member and the current parent of a preschooler and a kindergartner, and she has an upcoming ECC student. And Allison Garrett is a teacher at the ECC, she's been in the district for about 20 years, she's the parent of four. And myself will serve as the chair and you yourself will serve as ex officio. So the dates are being set and we'll post those. There are currently 17 different name selections so far, and the closing date for the public to submit named suggestions in writing is January 16th at 3 o'clock. And the email is in the email that we sent out, but it's BNC, Building Name Committee, BNC@northandoverpublicschools.com.
Outstanding. Thank you, Ms. Picard. Anybody have any questions? It sounds like...
Do you allow the rest of the process, you have a Subcommittee put together, what's their charge and what's their timeline?
Yeah, sure. So the mission of the Subcommittee is to make a recommendation to this board, who will vote on it. And our job is to organize the names and come up with a recommendation. So what I believe the process will be, and I've talked to most of the Subcommittee members, the first time that we get together, we'll review our charge, we'll review the policies that we have, we'll review the names of schools that are currently in the district and the history of the schools that were previously operating in North Andover Public Schools. We'll flesh out a longer list of qualities that we're looking for. The policy names five things that include, I won't be able to remember them all, but it's like location, history, people of significance. We have an actual policy. Yep, yep, and they can look right on, I think it's letter F in our policies. But then we'll, you know, we'll add to that, the qualities that we think are important at this point in naming a school. And then I'll give the list of names and the explanations to the committee and they'll be able to look at them individually and kind of rank them against the qualities that we're looking for. And then we'll come back together as a committee and we'll discuss, you know, which ones rise to the top, which ones we're thinking, you know, might be the best names. And we may meet a third time if we need to. I'd like that committee to come back with one strong recommendation that this committee can vote on, rather than asking this committee to choose between two or three names. I think it's a better process if we come up with one together. But we'll have to see how that comes out. And our goal is March 1st to come to this committee for a vote. That's 60 days after it was originally stated. The policy says that we need to do it 60 days after, but it doesn't say if it's school days or calendar days. So that's 60 calendar days. If we find for some reason, if we get snowed out all the dates that we want to meet, then we can push that out a little bit later, but it would be nice to get it done by March 1st.
I'm trying, the long time I've been involved and, you know, you and I have been through this, Andrew, with the naming of the track. Do we have a Subcommittee that, I mean, I appreciate the work they're gonna do, but it sounds to me like we are just giving them all our authority to do this. If you're gonna come back with one name, I mean, would you vote just to approve what the Subcommittee did? I think...
So the, all the names that are suggested will be also presented to this committee. So this committee doesn't have to take the recommendation of the Subcommittee.
I think for the track, we only had one.
Yeah. I know, the situation was quite different and this is actually, you know, that was obviously a very emotional decision that the board made and went through a long process and under Andrew's leadership, we came up with the policy. I guess I need to think about that a little bit more. I know I wasn't at the last meeting, but it seems to me we're just, you know, giving up the authority that we have as elected officials to make this a very important decision in my mind. So, you know, I don't know, it's gonna be tough if you guys just go with, here's the one name, and then we don't endorse that. You know, so I guess I have some concerns about that process, especially when these people just appointed...
But they're gonna present all the names to us, let us know what they all are, and explain their reasonings behind, right? So it's not like...
Yeah.
I think I would feel comfortable with a couple of names, and I think the policy is that we have a public forum to actually debate that as well and have people be able to speak on it.
Yeah, that was my recollection. I know we had people come and talk about Alex, I remember Steve Nugent made a very passionate speech and plea for that. I mean, that situation was obviously different. It'd be, you know, I just think, like I said, I think people would probably want to come and make a pitch in front of here. I mean, do you plan on...
They've all submitted written pitches.
I know. I know.
So we have public comment both on February 8th and on March 1st.
Here.
Those are the only, right here.
Yeah, yeah.
And the meetings that we have will be posted and will be public. So there's opportunities for people to...
Yeah. So, I mean, if you have 17 names already...
Yep.
And there's still to the 16th.
A lot to call for.
It sure is. And, you know, to be honest, I would anticipate that there could be some really emotional charges to some of those names as well. So I think, you know, we want to be sensitive how we approach this.
And the last thing, is the March 1st date for, was it March 1st you said?
March 1st, yep.
Is that, is that set in stone or what's the relevance of March 1st? I mean, I'm usually focused on getting it built right now, this is super important.
It is super important. I mean, the Franklin School was named in, you know, the early 1800s, so this is likely to outlast us, right?
Franklin Academy.
And Thompson School was named in 1924, so these things are likely to outlast us.
I don't say it's rushed, but I'm just wondering if we could...
So here's a few things. The March 1st goal is based on the 60 days that's in the policy. It's recommended by MASCE that we do these things swiftly and not elongated so that it doesn't become super emotionally charged and divisive for our community. So we're trying to work within those recommendations as well. And it's really an opportunity for us to get excited as a community. In March, the building should be starting to come together on the ground and people are gonna want to say, you know...
I think my date's coming up pretty soon on that one, but...
You know, we want people to be able to refer to what it is as the building process is happening. And I'm not imagining that the Subcommittee is gonna need more than about three meetings to do that. So if you want us to spread out our meetings more and hold the information, or, you know, I mean, if it becomes necessary, if it seems appropriate that we'll need more time, then we'll certainly take that, we aren't gonna rush to it. But that's...
To be fair, I mean, I think we've put the 60 days out there as, you know, a general guideline for that, so I mean, I'd be fine with, you know, basically waiting that to make sure that we do this. One of the things that I remember was that we had the ability to have people present and speak, and that there were two sessions for that, not just public comment, but that there were building naming conversations. I mean, we talked about naming the track, the Alexander P4EC track, twice. I mean, there were two set times and then we actually had our vote, I think after the second one, so...
Well, that certainly makes sense and that's been our process. We usually have a first reading and a second reading. So again, if we had our first reading on March 8th, we have two sessions between now and then, you know, should people wish to address us. And then if we have March 1st and then the next meeting, I think is the 15th.
We're gonna be at Thompson and Sargent, but people will be able to find us.
You know, I don't think anything's set in stone, but I don't see any reason to drag our feet on this either.
No, I'm not looking to drag our feet. You know, we're also caught because we have only one meeting in February.
Right.
So I think that makes it...
I think another thing that's important for us to consider is that we have an election coming up, so if we want this, if we want this, you know, if we want this committee seated to be able to make this decision, since we've been working on, you know, this process for quite a while, we would want to probably do that before, you know, I think it might be difficult for a new person to come in and try to figure out where they are and make such an important decision.
Right.
So those are, you know, we can see how it plays out, but that's how I'm imagining it'll play out.
Well, I actually have a concern to hear 17 in passion, please. I mean, it'd be great if we had a few, but if every single name that submitted, a whole Presentation Committee came, that would be pretty extensive.
You appointed this group of five, right?
Correct.
It's important for that group to call the names down to a handful, but again, I think it's our authority, it's our responsibility.
For sure.
We're the ones that the voters elect.
So noted, I've written down that you prefer to have the one name.
If those folks just give us one name, it's in essence just letting a non-elected body make a decision that's been empowered by us. So that's my biggest concern. I don't want to diminish the work that that committee's gonna do, but I think if they could call the names to a handful, whether that number is four or five...
So noted.
That's great.
I would feel more comfortable with that.
Just to echo on that, I mean, I think we struggled for a long time on the Educator Hall of Fame. I was gonna say Teacher of the Year, but Educator Hall of Fame. And, you know, that was the responsibility of the Vice Chair, right? And that kind of came up and then it was like, okay, great, like, one person is deciding this, you know?
Right.
Because it was one person of the committee. And so we changed that and so if, you know, I don't think we ever really anticipated building a building when we modified that, whatever it was, about a year and a half or so ago. But now we have a building coming, so...
You know, and...
Apparently. Well, we'll find out at 7:30.
And our, you know, the last time we built a building, the School Committee chose not to have much of a naming process and to just call it what it is, the Early Childhood Center. So, you know, there's all sorts of ways...
They had the foresight to see another addition to it, so they didn't want to...
I think maybe they had their energies and times and thoughts going, you know, in a different direction at that time. But this is exciting and this is significant, so...
Also, I think it sounds good to have a few opportunities, a few options to discuss.
I did see online Scholey McSchoolface or whatever.
Well, that's right. I mean, I think it is important for the public to realize that this isn't, you know, this isn't gonna be a public vote, we're not gonna be giving out flyers at town meetings saying, "What's your favorite name?" We don't want Scholey McSchoolface. And we also...
We'll talk about town meetings, too.
We might.
And I think too, you know, we want to be really respectful of these names that have come forward. They all have a very important story that our community wants to tell. And there's a really, you know, this is a really great opportunity to tell some of those stories and to be more aware, both of the things that are important to our community and of our own history and, you know, being able to tell the story again about the Annie L. Sargent School, being able to tell the story again about, you know, the other school names that we have in town. So I think it's a really great opportunity for us to take pride in our schools and share our history and contemporary and distant past, so...
I share those feelings exactly, Helen. I think, like you said, you have 17 names already. I mean, just to think that someone would think so highly of someone to nominate them and write a letter and ask that, that's an honor in and of itself. So I think I made the same point during the Hall of Fame. I mean, I know it's difficult to make that final decision, but just to be nominated is an honor. And I think, you know, I mean, we're in the Hollywood Award season, but I mean, a lot of these people who've been nominated, you're always gonna be an Oscar nominee. I mean, that alone is a title, you know, for a lot of people. So I think it's an honor to be nominated, I think it's no shame to get nominated and not be selected. So I, again, I think if you guys put forth a handful of names, then I think that'd be best.
That's great. Thank you very much, Helen, for leading the charge on that.
Thank you.
That's all I had. Superintendent?
I believe Mr. Gilligan went all the way to France to find Private Albert E. Thompson's grave.
Yes, he did.
So obviously, names matter.
Was that on the school, that?
No.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so I'm gonna start with some numbers. First number is 69. 69 kids made ice ornaments last week, including, I know, some kids from at least one member of the School Committee, so that was pretty exciting. Anyone wanna guess, my first Superintendent's Snow Challenge was to write thank you notes. Anyone wanna guess how many students reported that they spent at least part of the day on Thursday writing a thank you note?
Hundreds.
I would say hundreds.
I would say 120.
I'd say 312.
230. It's pretty exciting, right? We got 230 handwritten thank you notes. It's pretty exciting. I'm very excited.
Were you calling school off or was it...
I know. I've heard thank you notes, lots of grandparents and cousins. I know that Officer Caffrey got one from a student. I know a number of teachers got them, so it's just exciting. It was exciting that that challenge happened.
It was a great, I would have liked a chance to submit the parents who did, because our whole family did it because we thought it was such a good idea, so...
Yeah. I think we don't say thank you enough sometimes, so... Anyways, and then Stan, this one's for you. How many Chromebooks do you currently think are in our schools today?
Jeez, I was so off the last time. Okay, I would say, let's see, 2,000.
Close. 2,190.
Wow.
Very good, Mr. Gilligan.
So there you go. Way to go. So there you go. Mr. Gilligan, we've got a lot of PD coming up today, tomorrow. I was just gonna ask you, could you update folks on what we're doing?
Sure. Today was a really terrific day at North Andover High School. We finished up a three-day course for all new teachers in the district called Foundations in Teaching, put on by Research for Better Teachers, also known sometimes as the Skillful Teacher. And it was a really, the instructor that we have is just dynamite. She comes in from out of state, but it's probably one of the best programs, I think, in terms of the teaching craft and professional development around the teaching craft in maybe in the United States. I mean, it's pretty amazing. What was really amazing was at the end today, Dr. Price said she used her SUMI protocol. So this is a new protocol, I wasn't aware of this one. What surprised you? What do you think you'll use right away? What do you think you'll modify? And, you know, what kind of impact do you think that your learnings from this will have? So I'm not gonna go through all the lists, because we have quite a list, but it was really, it's really nice when teachers can collaborate work together, but can also can take something that they learned over three days, spread out over time so they can reflect, and then use it tomorrow in class, or use it next week in class, and be able to go back and forth with this cohort of new teachers. So as of now, we have 50 new teachers trained, 25 last year, 25 this year. You know, over two more years, we'll have 100 trained in these practices, best practices, and that'll be almost a third of our teaching staff. So it's pretty exciting that that's going on. Tomorrow, Research for Better Teaching is also back at the high school. They're doing some work around best practices and teaching all students with, and engage your student engagement with high school staff, and that's a two-session, it's the second session. But most importantly tomorrow, probably one of the best things we've done in a while is we have a guest speaker coming to kick off PD tomorrow. His name is Dr. John Diaria. He was a vice principal, guidance counselor, math teacher, principal, superintendent at Canton for a long time. And most recently, he was instructor at Boston College, but also president of Teachers 21. And that's probably the best PD company in New England, probably the most well-respected that put on the best product for teachers. He's currently left Teachers 21 and he is the UPenn stolm, so he flies down to UPenn three days a week and he is the professor of professional teacher practice. And he has to be one of the best speakers and experts around teaching the whole child and all students around with a growth mindset. So he's kicking off our keynote tomorrow, which is very exciting. Our teachers know who he is and they're thrilled about that. And, you know, then we'll be off doing different things with Eureka Math and Lucy Cockens and by department at the different schools, so...
And then John is spending the rest of the morning with the Sargent Elementary School as part of the plan that we have developed as a result of Karen's, as Karen came and talked about us really developing a plan to look at Sargent and how to improve that institution. So John has, gonna spend the rest of the morning with Sargent. They're actually being hosted by the Brooks School and they're gonna be at Brooks for the day. And he is, again, also someone that districts bring in to help and support schools that are trying to make a significant change. So he's gonna be supporting Sargent not only tomorrow, but we have contracted with him to be there for Karen for the rest of the year.
Outstanding. That's really good.
Teachers are really excited, I mean, it's really a big deal and it wasn't, the other day I was over at Atkinson while teachers were planning and they said, you know, we haven't had a lot of keynote speakers recently, you know, because they do cost money. But we, they said, "The nice thing about this is the kickoff to this speech really ties to all the work that we're doing in all the buildings and all the curriculum, and it's nice to have a common theme that we can, it's a jump-off point, that then we all go our different ways at elementary and middle and high, but we're all focused on the same thing." And a very wise fifth-grade Atkinson teacher mentioned that the other day and it was, I thought it was a really nice comment. Kay, I had one more thing. On Monday, the Boston Celtics, we talked about this before, about our partnership. So we've partnered up with our North Andover Middle School, 30 kids, and 30 kids from the Emily Green Weatherby School in Lawrence, South Lawrence, 30 of their students. And they are participating in a series of three workshops to really promote dialogue around diversity, inclusion, promoting conflict resolution, all the things that tie into race. And I think that's why Lawrence selected us, because we have some of these things in place and those are the things some of their working for. So the first part, as you're gonna know, Al Horford, Marcus Smart, Abdul Nadar, and Coach Stevens were over in Lawrence this Monday. Everyone's boarding a bus from North Andover in the Weatherby and they're heading down to the practice facility in Wildham. They're gonna catch practice. They're, we're partnering with an organization called Play Ball that's putting together actually a playbook around the situations that these kids created, not just the day in Lawrence, but the day that the Lawrence kids have come over to North Andover now, around, you know, the scenarios, what do you do when? So they're working on getting that done and I hear that may be even done for Monday. And then they'll be coming back in March to the North Andover Public Schools, three Celtics to coach, the Lawrence folks. And it's really cool. So I'm not gonna be there Monday.
I've got you covered, Mr. Gilligan.
But Dr. Price is coming over there. And it's a really great group of folks with Nikki Murphy and Joan McQuade and all of her, a bunch of her staff. And as I mentioned before, I thought it was gonna be just like a photo shoot, like a quick, like the guys show up for three minutes, they take a picture and say, "We're helping, you know, we're working in North Andover in Lawrence." It was not about publicity, it was, I mean, it was really three-hour session last time, really thoughtful, so these guys are lucky, they'll catch the end of practice, they might be a little jet lag from London, the Celtics, but they'll catch the end of practice and then they're gonna meet and talk about the playbook and then talk about next steps going forward, so...
So is the idea that then this cohort of kids will then take the playbook and work with their colleague, their student colleagues, or...
That's a great step. One of the, one of the things that we're looking at for, so the kids who got selected had to write a little essay or a paragraph about why they wanted to do it. And they wanted leaders and they said, "We want leaders." It doesn't mean, and it was interesting, because the Celtics were saying, "We want leaders and we want all kinds of leaders." And the hope is that we can train these kids, and this might tie really well into the ADL work, and I'm not getting into that right this minute, but ultimately, the goal is to have some of these kids do work then down in the elementary schools as well.
Excellent.
As ambassadors.
That's great, thank you.
Dr. Straight?
Yes, I'd like to share some of the good work that the Student Services Department is doing and how we're moving that into the Professional Development Day tomorrow. So as you know, part of the strategic plan is looking at having consistencies across our school district with regard to IEP writing, goal writing, presentations to parents, how we're working with students. So we're doing a continuing series with Alan Bloom, who is well-known and well-renowned for doing presentations and understanding how to run meetings, writing goals, all those specific pieces. specific pieces. So, we have a large group attending that after John speaks. In addition to that, another one of our strategic plan goals was the consistency across districts for 504 writing, student assistant team process, and the types of interventions that we're providing there. So, we're also having that professional development tomorrow with Dr. Kurt Bates, who's been a superintendent, who's been a principal, who's been a director of special education. So, he's done a lot of work in that particular area, and he's gonna, community's working with our guidance counselors, our school psychologists, some of our speech and language people, and some of our assistant principals to get that process rolling. So, we have a lot of good things happening and happy that we are collaborating on all of this.
And we do thank the parents for our day tomorrow.
Yes, we do.
We know that when we do a professional development in the middle of the year, we just thank everyone, but please know that the time is being very well-spent. Few other things for me, quickly. I just wanna kinda give you an overview, just a reminder to you guys, tomorrow, we have the town manager's mayor's breakfast at the Andover Country Club, starting at seven-thirty. For those of us who can make it, we've been specifically invited by Andrew Mailer to attend, so I'll see some of you tomorrow morning. Upcoming meetings, so we, for the next two weeks, we have the budget, the eighteenth and the twenty-fifth. The twenty-fifth is the public hearing. Just to kinda preview the next month and a half or so in terms of what we plan to present, and then I know that we'll have other things coming in, like the naming. February eighth, we're gonna do my mid-cycle review. It's time to do that. We're gonna talk, we had talked beginning of the year about the concept of Blizzard Bags, our Alternative School Day, so we're gonna have Lorraine Marks come and talk to us about that. It might be timely. And then Steve Nugent and Chet Jackson are gonna come and report to us about the relationship of class rank to kids' post-secondary success, so we wanna talk about that concept. March first, we're gonna go over to Thompson and have, like we did last year with Lucy Cockens writing, we're gonna have some teacher, a teacher talk to us about the Eureka Math, and Carol Larkum will be able to talk about the, how we've rolled out Eureka Math and how that's going. We'll also get an update then at that time on Fit Money and the curriculum being rolled out. And then on March fifteenth, we would like to go to Sargent so that we can talk about Lucy Cockens reading, which is something we'd really like to think about adopting in a thoughtful manner, kind of a rolling out slowly manner over the next few years. And we'd really like to have you guys hear about one of our pilot classes that's really using that approach to reading, so that we can make a decision on that. And then on April fifth, I will not be here, but Mr. Gilligan will chair the, not chair, sorry, not chair, be the superintendent for the day there, and we're gonna have Donna Straight and Nikki Murphy and team give us an update on our social, emotional work, learning work that we've been doing as part of our strategic plan. And then on April twenty-sixth, I've asked Mike Grant to come in and give his annual technology update. So, just kind of letting you know where we're headed for the next few months and make sure that that works for everybody. And then my last update is just a, we have launched the middle school principal search. Carrie Wahlberg and I are co-chairing a really fun committee of folks, none of whom are shy retiring wallflowers, which is really fun, including Carrie and me. And just to let you know how deep the pool is, we have actually added an additional round, because the pool is so deep, that we are going to be doing a very kind of short interview process, probably interviewing somewhere between twelve and sixteen folks. Get that down. We've divided the committee into two groups, the red group and the black group, and we're each gonna take probably about eight folks, and then actually, the second round will be in front of the whole committee. And it's really, we have such a deep pool that we feel like we wanna not narrow it just based on resumes. We'd like to do kind of the speed round of interviewing and then get the smaller group down. But it's exciting that we have such a deep pool that we need to kind of modify our process. We're still on target to make the decision prior to February break, so we're ready, we're going, we're meeting tomorrow at two to narrow our pool down to who we wanna interview, but we're moving and grooving on that, and we're excited about it.
That's excellent.
Without saying the names, what's the makeup of the committee?
Yeah, so the, yeah, so the committee is two parents, community representative is Officer Caffrey, myself and Carrie. Brooke Randall, the new assistant principal at the high school, is representing the high school, which I think is great. There's a lot of conversation about how middle school to high school transition, and then the rest of the committee, which is about six, four people, our teachers, teaching, and then we have one of the secretaries from, from the middle school. So, it's very heavily middle school faculty and staff, and then middle school parents, and then us. So, it's a group of about, I think, eleven?
Good.
Eleven or twelve. And, you know, we've, we've got some fun folks on there, too.
So, you said the first round begins between twelve and sixteen people. Can you tell us like the number of applicants you?
Yeah, so I think the total applicant pool was around thirty-two, I think, Mr. Gilligan. And the challenge is, you know, we, we have, it's just really deep, and we've got a lot of us sitting principals, we have a lot of long-tenured assistant principals, and we just felt like, given the depth of the pool, we wanted to give an opportunity to just meet as many people as we could.
That's great.
So, you know, this is not a process we've used in the past, and it's just reflective of, I think, the depth of this, of this pool.
Good.
So, it's, it's a good problem to have, in my opinion.
That's right.
So, that's it for my superintendent's report. Chair Meble.
Thank you very much. Mr. Trissey, could we have a school building update?
Sure, sure.
Committee update, subcommittee.
I don't wanna disappoint Ms. Picard, but you will not see progress there by March first. You're welcome to drive down to Pennsylvania, central Pennsylvania to see some, some work in action down there. I think we have a road trip in May, I think, I don't know. But as you know, it's modular construction, so they'll start building those modulators in, actually, they'll build it, as I found out from, we had our first coordination meeting with the contractor on Tuesday for a couple hours, and they kinda described the process, the timeline, and we're still got that August twentieth deadline on, on time for that, for them to turn the keys over. But, you know, they'll submit the, the final plans that the architect has come up with, and they'll get to work on that down in, I forget the name of the town in central Pennsylvania, but, you know, it's a little hike away. And then they'll, they'll actually build the building down there and then take it apart, and then they'll, they'll ship it up here. But that doesn't take place till, you know, May, June. So, the real key is to know if we're gonna be on time is the weather. So, obviously, we're psyched about today and tomorrow, melting snow, but as quickly as we can get in the ground out there and do the foundation work, which will be the trickiest part. You know, that, that's where, if there are any delays, it'll be because of Mother Nature. You know, this thing's gonna be built again someplace far away and shipped here. So, we're excited about it. You know, the Triumph team came up here on, on Tuesday, like I mentioned, four or five people, about the OPM, the architect, and a couple members of the school building committee. So, we're still, like I said, about August twentieth.
And I do think, you know, I think for those of us who are on the ground here, the first kind of real sign of all this we're gonna see is over April break.
Yeah.
And we have to start fencing off the area, alternative entrances into the ECC. We're really gonna try to do a lot of that work over April break, so when we return from April break, that's when we're all gonna realize we're in the middle of a building project.
That's when, that's when she's in different traffic patterns up there.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, last time, Mary Lou Connors posted pictures, I think she tweeted, in fact, pictures of the components being built, so Triumph sent her pictures from Pennsylvania.
I think that will happen again.
And that, that would be cool to do again.
That's fun, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we talked about that, talked on FaceTime down there, so I thought we'll post on, on the, on the website. But, you know, they offered, you know, we'll see if, you know, to go down there and inspect the modules as they're being built sometime in, you know.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, we'll see.
Road trip.
Lot going on. It's exciting stuff, though. It feels, it feels real now. It feels like that first six months of doing the work, you know, was, do we want this? Do we want that? How's it gonna, and now it's like getting down to brass tacks. Exciting times.
Good, thank you. Any questions other than? Great, thank you. So, we do have some old business. We have a second reading of the trip to Ecuador and the Galapagos.
I think we discussed it last time, so I'm wondering if we could take a vote.
I don't remember if there were any open questions to that.
There weren't, or I would be reporting that.
Right. Okay.
So, I'm moved to approve, as presented in the packet, the overnight trip to Ecuador and the Galapagos.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McDevitt, second by Mr. Trissey. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Oh. Do they need school committee chaperones? I might be interested in that.
I'll, I'll let them know.
No, that's, I think that's a very, all these trips are very exciting looking.
You have a child that might wanna go on the trip?
She's already going on a trip, so one is enough.
Come on. I'll turn up.
This is where the chocolate is from, was fundraiser for that trip, actually. It's very good. So, MSBA update, also Dr. Price.
Yeah, so I, I had written you guys, but just to kinda put it into the public record, we were not invited into the next round of the MSBA process for the middle school. As you remember, we did the middle school statement of interest, assuming that this was gonna take a number of years to get into the queue. I will tell you, the feedback that we got from MSBA was that our project was absolutely in line. They had no questions about our, our project. They think it's a doable project. They think it's a needed project, and we had made it through the first phase. We even made it a little farther than that. We were really considered, and we were highly encouraged to reapply for next year and to basically just reapply with the same application. They did not ask us to make significant changes. They felt like we presented it very well. They felt that we didn't have to make changes or justify it any other way. The one change that we're gonna do is we're gonna get at least a ballpark estimate of the cost, which I think they asked us and we were unable to answer. It, it doesn't really matter, other than when they get down to the end of what they can afford. So, that is the one change we plan to make, and we will be resubmitting. It is opening up in the next day or two, and Mr. Mealy and I will go through the process. The one other thing that I think is, you know, last year, we took a vote where we just said we're supportive. I actually think we might wanna kind of submit something that we say, like, we really are, stand behind this and are excited about it, and, and talk to our state representatives as it gets later.
Same votes need to take place, though. We need a board of selectmen vote.
We, yes, we're gonna do all the votes. But if, if you remember, last year, we kinda just did the, the kind of perfunctory votes, and so I think, you know, we might wanna just kind of maybe add a letter of support or something like that. Because remember, last year, this was kinda the first conversation, and I think as we've talked about it more and more, and as the town manager has talked about it in, within his five-year forecast, I, I think most folks in North Andover are understanding that this is something this district needs and are, are behind the concept of it, so. So, I, again, I, I think we take it as very good news that we made it as far as we did, and that we have been highly encouraged to resubmit, and we will do that as quickly as we can.
It probably comes down to they just had other projects also needed, right?
Yeah, so it really was, and I spoke with the woman who made the decision. She said, "Look, it's, we only have so much money, and there's a bunch of projects out there that we felt couldn't even wait a year. And, and we think yours is important and needs to get done, but it wasn't at the same level of urgency as the other ones."
Fair enough.
So, but we will do that, and we will, in the next few meetings, start going with all the votes we need to take.
Super.
Okay?
That's right.
And be showing it to you, so.
Thank you.
Good.
Okay.
Do you wanna do the trip and just to get it underway?
That's a good idea, actually, sure. So, there's a first reading, so ten B would be first reading on the American Thought class trip to Washington DC, which is a different Washington DC from last year, and I guess that's, I'm already thinking back to last year.
I thought you said it was a different Washington.
I was thinking it was, but no, it is the same.
It's the same, it's the same trip.
Okay. All right, 'cause I remember last year, that's when you had brought up, Mr. Trissey, about, gosh, can they fly instead and all that? Okay. So, first reading.
So, I do, I do have one question. This is a, an AP American Thought trip, and I'm, I'm wondering, I don't make any suggestion that we change this trip, but I'm wondering if students at the honors level, CP level, have opportunities for these kinds of trips as well, or if that's something that's possible sometime in the future.
Yeah, I could absolutely ask. Happy to do that. I'll let you know next time.
Thank you.
So, is there anything particular about this?
No, I mean, we did, it's the same trip as last year. I mean, they are flying down, staying in a hotel. You can see it's very packed in terms of what the kids are gonna be doing, and it does really kind of complement the AP curriculum, so it's, it's really in line with the work that we're doing.
I think it's great. Just one thought, because I actually got it mixed up from what we already did last year, do we ever have a chance to hear back about, gosh, how it went, so that when we get these year after year, was it great? Should we do it? Do we ever see student reports? Does anybody ever?
We can absolutely do that. We did that from the Dominican Republican.
Definitely.
Yeah.
We have.
The DR we did, I think.
I was gonna say, the, when, the first time that they did that trip.
Yeah, they came and.
Which may have been two years ago?
Yeah.
Or maybe three even now.
I was here, so two.
You were here? Okay, all right. Yeah, they came and reported, but I think that's the only time.
Yeah, great idea.
They have come and, and just talked a little bit about it.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
Well, it could be part of the student report.
That's right.
Yeah, but it's great to have them come.
Because if, yeah, we, we're asked to approve all this stuff, it'd be great for us to actually, other than reading it on a paper, to have a little bit more of.
We can absolutely make that happen.
Is this valuable?
Easy to do.
Easy to do.
When I chaperoned last year at DC, so I think I, I think it was a tremendous.
Right, you did, right, right.
We packed it so much, and the teachers did a really awesome job, not only with the museums and things, but like setting up tours with the Pentagon and different speakers.
Those are invaluable.
And it was really.
Yeah, it's amazing.
So, maybe like to our process, maybe we don't do every single trip, but it'd be great, some kind of mechanism as, by the way, thanks, this is what I got out of it, or what have you.
Yeah, we can totally add that and invite, and, I mean, they're an amazing experience. I'd love you to hear about them.
That's right. Great, thank you. Thanks for the info. So, now we can go on to the budget. I gave one to Mr. Limper, but we have some other guests. Does anybody else like to have a copy?
I think, I think everyone's got something.
Everybody's fine?
Tim probably has it, right?
Tim has it.
Yeah, he can probably.
I know, Tim's all right, yeah. All right, thanks. But thank you to Ms. Segari for making those extras that I asked about.
I'll have them for the next few meetings.
That's right.
If anyone comes. So, here's the cover page, and we're gonna start with my, I think you went onto the presentation, Mr. Mealy, and there is a, as you've all seen, I did do an executive summary that I sent out to the teachers today. I tweeted out, so anyone can have access to that. It's obviously also linked to the school committee agenda tonight. So, just a, a little bit, just a reminder of the process, I recommend the budget to you. Over the next two meetings past this, we will discuss it, and you will take a final vote, I hope, on January twenty-fifth on this. And then it goes on to the, the Board of Selectmen, to the FinCom, and ultimately is decided at town meeting, so, just so we remind you of the process.
Wait, I do have a question. So we vote on the 25th after the public hearing?
Yes.
Or not a meeting after?
No, after the public hearing. Remember, if we made that decision saying that we would vote after the public hearing, if there was major reasons we need to push it off, we would. But we haven't had those in the past.
Okay.
All right, so just a little overview of what I plan to do, which is talk about our strategic plan and the budget directives, the overall financial picture, and then talk about the proposed increases, conversation about special education and the nuances of that financially, some other changes, and then I added a section last year just about looking forward, which I like to add, about kind of what is ahead for us. And I will tell you, before we start, I really appreciate all the assistant superintendent's input on this budget. The entire leadership team has given input on this budget. I've worked very closely with Judy Rogers and Mary Lou Connors, as you can imagine, given the focus of this budget, along with Donna Straight in terms of student services. Obviously, Mr. Mealy and I are the ones who kind of do the vast majority of this work, but given that I'm going to be turning over the reins to Mr. Gilligan, he was intimately involved in this, because although I'm writing this budget, it's going to be his to make happen. So this is a joint effort. I think we all stand behind this. This is not just really my budget. Obviously also, and I say it in the executive summary, I worked incredibly closely with the town manager Mailer on this. He has helped a ton in getting us to where we need to be, and he is in full support, and this is within his recommended guidelines. It's, if it is approved, this will be the sixth year in a row that we are moving forward on a consensus budget, which is almost unheard of in towns across Massachusetts. So just to kind of preface it. Okay, so the strategic plan, I don't think I have to remind you guys of our three major strategic objectives. It's all students, it's hire and develop excellent educators, and it's consistent rigorous curriculum, so. Also, your school committee budget directives, spending a lot of time thinking about class sizes, our goal of getting to 15%, which we discussed a few weeks ago, and then also to make sure that we have aligned what we're doing with the strategic plan, and then make sure that we have the needed resources to open the new ECC or whatever it's going to be called, and then that we have up-to-date technology and resources, and that we make sure that we take into account the needs of our high-need learners, including special education services. So just those are your budget directives. The overall financial picture, our current budget this year, $47,35,187. Level services, and we'll talk a little bit about that, is a 2.81% increase. What I'm proposing to increases, all of which are to the early childhoods complex, is an additional .84, which means a overall increase of 3.65%. And that is within the recommendation from the town manager. Here are the overview. If you go to the next slide, I can really get into some detail. So all of this, and I know it's small, but we're trying to get it on one slide, you have it in front of you too, it really is, we are opening a brand-new school, and we need to make sure that that school is staffed in a way that it feels like a school. And I've, we thought a lot about it, so let me just give you a very simple example. Counselors, we have counselors in all of our elementary schools. We are not adding additional students to our district, so you could argue that we take each of those counselors and pull them out of one of their elementary school and have them go to the ECC one day a week. That makes no sense across the board. It makes no sense for the ECC, as they would have a different person in there, and also our counselor loads at each of our schools are huge. So this way, we get to reduce our counselor loads across all of our elementaries, and we get to staff the ECC appropriately. So in all of these cases, it is going to help the supports, a lot of the student services that we're providing, it's going to be able to do, we've talked a lot about reducing class size, but now we're reducing counselor loads. We're reducing the number of kids that are nurses overseeing. We're reducing special education loads. We're going to be reducing reading teacher loads. So EL supports, all of those things. So first of all, a school nurse is an example. We have a full-time school nurse at the ECC, but many of you know that our school, the needs of our students at the ECC are often medically very intense. We cannot open a school of 400, 3, 4, 5, and 6-year-olds with one nurse. We need at least one and a half nurses, so we are proposing an additional half-time nurse. We, a counselor, I hope I explained. Speech and language, we also, many of the students at the ECC are given early speech and language intervention. Often, speech and language intervention is for our youngest kids, so we need a speech and language pathologist or therapist to be able to support our students at the K. Again, reducing the speech and language caseloads at the rest of the elementary schools. Reading teacher, as we'll talk about in a few weeks, we really want to think about reading at the K level and focus a lot of attention on how to teach reading and to support reading and to provide intervention in reading. And so our hope is to add a half-time reading teacher at the ECC, so that we are providing that incredibly important support to K. We have not been able to provide the level of support to K over the last few years, just starting this year, I think second half of K, is that correct? This would allow us to start the moment the kids arrive at K and we're able to get some assessment of how the kids are doing. Is that fair, Mr. Gilligan?
Very fair.
Okay. Special education teacher, so we're probably going to have about 50 students on IEPs that given our 14% at the ECC and K. We're going to need two special education teachers at the ECC in order to support those students. We will hire an additional one and then reallocate one from the middle school, where actually our caseloads are the smallest. And so, not necessarily a person, but a position. So we will have full two, two full-time special educators at the ECC. Just a reminder, our preschool teachers are dual-certified in special education and regular education, so they provide in the smaller class sizes with much smaller requirements of student to adult ratio, they provide that support for the preschool students, but in a kindergarten classroom, we need to have special education support.
We do, yes. No, that's perfect, and the sooner we can provide that early intervention for students, the sooner we're going to see increases in their capacity academically. Also, looking at the work that we could do collaboratively with the reading specialist as well as with the speech and language pathologist, that will only increase students' capacity to improve their learning, so it's really very exciting.
And this increase will actually result in decreasing the average special education loads K to 6 from 31 to 28. So again, the impact is across the board.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
The, this result will result in decreasing the average special education caseload K to 6 from 31 to 28. And just some other numbers that are in the executive summary, in terms of counselors, the average counselor load will go from 449 to 374. Again, this is how we impacted across the board, and the nurses' load will go from 374 students to one nurse to 345. So across the board, we are making impact in these areas.
And that's in our detail in the packet.
It is, all in the executive summary. Yep. Obviously, we, a number of our students at the K will need some English language support. We actually have none at the pre-K, so even to be able to support teachers in that regard. And so, as I'll talk about a little bit later, that is a tutor position, and we're looking at 15 hours a week of support in EL. Specialists, we've worked very, very closely with all of our elementary principals, Mary Lou and Judy, to figure out how are we going to handle specials at the new ECC, along with the physical structure and understanding the limitations of that place space, how often can we have PE in there, along with it having to be a place for kids to have lunch. We have gotten down to the detail, we actually know the specialist schedule for next year right now, because we had to do that in order to make a budget recommendation. We are recommending a .3 increase in specialists. Again, the reason for that is not because we have more specialist classes, it's that teachers are going to have to travel between buildings. So in order to be able to facilitate the travel, we're going to need an additional .3. And all of our K students will get PE once a week, they will get, they will get PE once a week, art once a week, music once a week, and library once a week. And that is very much dictated by the building and what we can handle within the building. So obviously, we need a custodian. Right now, there is a custodian, there's not a daytime custodian at the ECC, so if there is a student who gets sick in the middle of the day, somebody comes up from the middle school. With a fully operating cafeteria and a, and, you know, 16 additional classrooms of kindergarteners, we need a full-time custodian. I don't think I have to talk about that much more. Currently, there is a .4 secretary at the ECC. Obviously, with a school of 400 kids, we need a full-time secretary. And then we currently have a .2 special education administrator overseer of, and we need to have that be a half-time person with the number of students around IEPs. The last thing we have talked about is for next year, and I say this in the backup documentation in the executive summary, we've thought a lot about what the administrative structure needs to look like at the ECC. And all of us have really come to the idea that as we're bringing two groups of folks together, we're bringing the K together, and we're bringing the ECC together, that the short-term way to have effective administration is to have Mary Lou, who has worked at the ECC, and Judy Rogers, who's been our K coordinator, kind of co-run the building. None of us believe that that is the long-term solution. We actually think you're going to need a principal and an assistant principal or just a principal, and really think about that. But for a year or two, and that'll be obviously your decision, we feel very strongly, and those two have already been working very, very closely together around that transition. For instance, tomorrow, while everybody else is doing things within their buildings, we're actually pulling the pre-K and the K together, and they are going to spend the day tomorrow after John Doria, they're going to spend the morning really thinking about transition and how to support kids, and what does it look like, and what are expectations for kindergarten, and how can pre-K support those. And then in the afternoon, Eva from the School Building Committee is going to come and talk about the move and how that's going to happen and what that's going to look like. So we think that kind of joint leadership role is really important in its beginning, and so that's what we are proposing here. Questions?
Yes, I'm going to say, did you want us to ask questions in between?
Nope. So I'll do each section and then.
That'd be great.
Would that work? So that's the overview of my proposals.
So on these positions, I guess I'm curious, how many of these would be like new hires versus how many people are just going to be picking up extra hours? Are you not hiring a?
We're going to hire.
A brand-new secretary? Is this like a person who works part-time right now, and you're going to make that person full-time?
So it would be a brand-new, anything that's 1.0 would be a new person.
Right.
I think the school nurse, Cheryl Barzak has some grant funds, and she really needs another half-time nurse at the high school, so it would probably be grant-funded, and this together would be a new person.
Okay.
In terms of the read, what?
It'd be fun being with the three-year-olds and the.
Yeah.
Seventeen-year-olds.
Our nurses can do it, they're quite an amazing group, but who knows if it would be the same person or if she'd move things around or. I think in terms of the reading teacher, we don't have anybody who would go to full-time who's half-time, so we'd be looking for a half-time reading teacher. In terms of EL support, that would probably be a new hire, is that correct, Mr. Gilligan? I'm just going down the non.
But that EL support wouldn't be a, that person at 15 hours a week is not.
It's a tutor.
That's just an hourly.
Yep. And then specialist, I don't quite know the answer, because that's going to be an art, music, PE, you know, we're not going to hire one person to be that ninja, so I don't really know how we'll work that out, but we will figure it out.
The principals really did a remarkable job putting that schedule together and figuring this out. It took them quite some time.
The secretary, that's something that I really am going to leave to Judy and Mary Lou to figure out how that would work. And the special ed admin, that's really up to Dr. Straight for that additional. But the 1.0 positions, and then obviously we talked about the administrator principal, so the 1.0 positions would all be new.
Okay.
That does not mean, for instance, let's just think, Dr. Straight and I had a long conversation today, that we would have two brand-new special educators at the ECC. It might make more sense to bring a seasoned person and a new person, and then put a new person over in another school, if there's somebody for whom K is interesting and they would want to do it. So, you know, those are conversations to think about.
Thank you.
Opportunities for those people.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
But, you know, we have lots of special educators working with kindergarteners right now, so is there somebody who would like to do that? And then we could have kind of a veteran and a new person, and we're going to have to really think about those things. But there's a bunch of hiring that's going to have to happen for the ECC. You know, I will tell you, just to note, and I want to be very transparent about this, you will notice that I'm not adding an additional kindergarten teacher or kindergarten TA, and I talk about that in the executive summary. And the reality of the situation is, within the financial constraints, we could not afford that. And we can always add a 16th teacher and a 16th TA, because we're going to have a 16th classroom. That's why we built the 16th classroom. You know, as long as we don't have over 330 students register for K, we'll be able to stay within the 22 guidelines. If we do go above that, we actually, because of some reallocation, specifically the 5th grade at Atkinson, we have one yet as a sign for next year, teacher K to 6, K to 5, and if it needs to be a K, it'll be a K. So it really just depends as registrations come in, and we know what we're doing. But this is not everything that you would want to do to open up the school, but it's very close, and our feeling was to open up a school without these supports and these positions was not really making it feel like a school.
It's going to fail.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and, you know, you're not going to say, well, without a reading teacher, it's not a school, and I don't mean to, you know, make it too big, but I think we want this school to feel like the experience that the students would get at any of our elementary schools, and these additional supports make it happen, right? You know, we shouldn't have a secretary two days a week with a school of 400 kids, and you can keep going. We need a custodian, we need a, you need, so.
This isn't a surprise, I mean, you've been talking about this for a long time, and I know we met with parents all last, last spring and winter, before town meeting, I mean, we made that commitment to them that this is going to be a fully operational school.
And this is what it takes to do it. And again, it's not everything, but I think it's everything we need to feel really good about those doors opening next September.
A couple of things. One, I think it's really a terrific thing to emphasize, that it's decreasing caseloads for, you know, all elementary school students across the district. It's not a benefit just to kindergarten students or ECC students, it's a benefit to all our elementary students. I think that's really important to emphasize, so I'm glad you did that. My one question, I see a lot here, language-based, how, what supports might be needed for math? And is our current math coaching structure and other things sufficient to that? Or is that one of the things that we'll be building on in future years?
Yeah, so I will let Mr. Gilligan answer after I take a first pass at it. You know, language acquisition at this level is the most important thing.
Right.
And so that's really where your focus is at this developmental level.
I'd echo that, and I think that the work that Cara and Val Drine and the math coach have done with kindergarten has been really very well-done this year. I think that, I would agree with the language acquisition, the most important thing kids can do is learn how to read, and, you know, the phonemic awareness and sounds, and math piece will come, and I don't, I wouldn't say we're neglecting math.
Yeah, and I do think that when you're thinking about interventions at the pre-K and K level, those are very much around language acquisition. You're not doing math interventions.
And I would also include in that the benefit of really all of us having analyzed the stuff that we need and how they would interact, is having that full-time speech and language person, having the ELL person, having the two special ed teachers, where the vision is for them to be able to go into the classrooms and do some co-teaching and do some working with small groups of students on just those types of things that are needed, inflict some teaching-type strategies as well to improve those pieces as well. So really looking at it as a collaborative effort to that approach.
And one other piece with the math is the huge benefit, I mean, is you have all the teachers that teach kindergarten math in one building that will have the ability to collaborate and share practices and what's working, what's not working with each other, rather than just a team of three or a team of two.
Great, thanks.
Do you envision having to hire kindergarten teachers, or are, I guess what I'm trying to ask is, are the kindergarten teachers that are in our buildings today, are they all moving over, or as openings come up in their existing schools, do we know, are they choosing to stay in their school?
Yeah, so that's not a choice. I'm just being very clear, that if there is an opening, they have to go through the full process to apply and be appointed to that position, so no one's going to just get moved from K to another. We've been really clear across the board with all schools and teachers that that is the process. It is my understanding at this point, other than we have one retirement of a K teacher, and there are some non-PTSK teachers, so we don't want to make any assumptions there. And it is my understanding that I think all of the kindergarten teachers are going to be moving over at this point.
Okay. I just, I feel like that level of experience, kind of all coming over and being able to share and collaborate is really important, and if you were to say, you know, I'm just making this up, but, you know, let's say there's, you know, three openings at Sargent because of retirements or something like that, and two kindergarten teachers were moving to 3rd and 5th grade for whatever reason, and then, you know, in we come with, you know, I'm not saying brand-new teachers, but, you know, a group that hasn't really been in our schools before, I think that is an additional challenge.
Yeah, that's not, we're not anticipating. We do know of one retirement at this point, and I don't know of any that are moving to stay within their school.
Their existing buildings, okay.
Yeah, and so.
Okay. I think that helps to.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
To make it succeed.
Good question. But again, you never know, right? In terms of retirements, et cetera.
Do you have any other questions?
No, no, not right now.
Do you have any questions? I just had one, would you remind me, does the Early Childhood Center currently have music, art, and PE? They don't, right?
And we're not currently staffed to give them access to that?
This does not, that's what I was.
No, and what this does do is, we have built-in time, for instance, in the place space, that they actually will be able to go into the place space with their teachers.
For change of venue.
Yeah, for change of venue.
But teacher-run.
Correct, and if they're, if that 16th classroom is not used, that will become an art space that the ECC, that the pre-K and the K can use.
Can use, okay.
But that is not the model of preschool instruction to have these specials.
Right. I didn't think so, I was just curious to clarify.
And not something that we have recommended, because it's without, outside of our scope, and I'm not even sure if it makes sense educationally.
Okay.
We need to explore that.
It's inherent within the program of the preschool students.
So much of what their day is, right. Yeah, but they will have additional spaces, they'll also have access to the library, which will be a specific pre-K K library.
Do we, in the next few months, do we set the rates for the folks that pay for pre-K at some point?
Yes, we do.
Yeah. Is there a thought, because they're getting more, for lack of a better amenities or new amenities, to look at those rates?
Value-added.
Value-added.
What do you think, Jim?
I mean.
Yeah, we're actually going to be looking at all the different, you know, the buses, the athletics, we'll bring them all forward and discuss the pros and cons, including preschool tuition.
When are we brought on that? I know we do.
We do do in March.
You do in March, okay.
Mm-hmm.
I had one other tiny question, just was about EL support. Obviously, this is an estimate, right? The tutor hours.
Yeah, so we're going to talk about that in a little bit.
Great.
Is that all right if I move on? Okay, special education, I just really want to frame this. So we've talked about this, but just to kind of bring it back in this part of the the conversation, we have been quite successful in reducing our out-of-district costs this year, thanks to the great work of Dr. Straight and her team, to the tune of a conservative number of $250,000, which is the first time in any recent history we've actually seen a decrease in out-of-district costs. We saw a small decrease last year, but nothing to this level. And that was very helpful, because if you remember, Circuit Breaker came in at sixty-five percent. We had anticipated it coming in. There was a $130,000 differential that we were able to cover. And then that additional $120,000 we have done to be able to hire in-district programs. So we hired a special educator at the high school. We just brought in a brand-new behaviorist to help our, our district-wide BCPA. We've really been able to, to support. My recommendation for next year is, we are hoping to continue this trend. However, I do not think it's prudent at this point to actually take any of those funds and place them into hiring, hired positions-
Sorry.
-for a number of reasons. One is, as you know, out-of-district spending is highly volatile, thus the stabilization fund that we have with the FinCom. So to make a decision based on something that if we end up in a mediation and we lose, or if we have somebody move in, I, I think it's a place that you need to be sensitive to, 'cause if not, then you put your district in a place where you're behind the eight ball and you have to freeze and all of that. We've been there before. And on top of that, I think that one of the things that we need to do to continue this trend is to continue to support our in-district programs. So the deal that we've made with special education this year, and I'm proposing that you make for next year, is that any savings that they can get from out-of-district, we actually reinvest in our in-district programs to be able to continue this trend to keep the kids in district. Over time, that is how we reduce our significantly out-of-proportion special education out-of-district costs. So my suggestion is that we maintain level funding for special education at the level of, with the reduction that we've already seen this year, which we've already allocated. And it also, I will tell you, I, I am proposing a budget that assumes a sixty-five percent reimbursement. I'm taking a very conservative approach here, and I think it is the right approach to take. I don't think that there's any signal from the state government that that number's gonna be any higher. I think that there's signals that we should not do anything more than that. If we happen to get a higher reimbursement than that, then that's a great conversation that you can have, Mr. Gilligan. I hope that conversation for you. But I think to do anything else would be not fiscally thoughtful and would be somewhat irresponsible. So I'm proposing we keep our out-of-district at the same level. Hopefully, that number will be reduced, and those savings will be able to support our in-district programs. For instance, let me give you one very clear example. The TIP program at the Kittredge is, is quite large, and is frankly larger than it should be. I think it's gonna be in the best interest of this district to open a second social-emotional program at another elementary next year to really be able to have two of those programs to kids, keep kids in district. That is how, we would be able to fund that through this type of savings. If, if we don't do that, there's no way we could do that. And then that leads to, if the program can't take, take additional kids, we're sending kids out, and it just kind of snowballs. So there's just a very concrete example of what we're talking about.
Yeah, and that's a perfect opportunity. Another area where we're seeing some good success as well, and we talked a little bit about this, North Andover was automatically sending our eighteen-year-old students out to out-of-district placements that, you know, we would have till they were twenty-two. So we've used some of that money to create an additional program, and we've kept in four students just this year for huge savings there. And on top of that, what we're doing is connecting that program to the community. So we're providing opportunities for those students to get some job experience, some vocational experience, some opportunity for travel training, shopping, going to the Y, so that they're truly, and continue to be a part of their own community, which is very appropriate. So we've really been analyzing all of the different areas that we believe we need to increase supports in those programs. And it's truly based on, as we had discussed earlier in the year, the high percentage of emotional students that we were placing out and how we've been building up and supporting those programs, as well as some of our autism programs. And again, we've talked a lot about bringing that training program in, and the cost savings that we've had for that. That's allowed us the behavior specialists. So we're really moving forward and thinking broadly and forward with regard to what's in the best interest of North Andover students and the schools.
So again, my proposal is to make no change to that, to that budget line for all of the reasons I just talked about. Any questions about that? Okay, some other important changes I just wanna highlight. I am gonna be asking at town meeting that we increase the Medicaid reimbursement fund amount. So just so that we're really clear, we can only spend the money that we get back from Medicaid. However, this year, we do believe, although tracking the money is like the hardest thing Mr. Mealy and I have to do, because it comes in like seven, one payment is like six quarters back and one is, I, I, we have absolutely no idea. And we're quite good and facile with numbers, so please don't reflect, that's not, I hope a reflective of our competence. It's just the most complicated thing ever. We do, we do feel that that number's gonna be higher than $250,000, so we'd like to increase the amount that we can spend in that revolving account. We're recommending $450,000. I do not think we will get $450,000, but I don't think the superintendent should have to go every year to increase this cap. So I'm just thinking, here is an opportunity to get it to a cap where we think would be able, we will not get that, those amount of funds for a number of years. This way, we can just go up, and then every year, we don't have to go back to the town asking them to change that cap. So I, I don't want anyone to think we're gonna have $450,000 in curriculum resources, but I do think we're gonna have north of 250. I think we're thinking more around three, 350. So we'll know more. We've only gotten one reimbursement so far, so we've got a lot more tracking to. I hope by town meeting, I'll have a much better sense of what we anticipate that number will be. But again, Mr. Gilligan and I knocked on doors over, right before the holiday break. Laura Hardeman's done an amazing job. We're-
Amazing.
High above the ninety percentile of, of parents that have given us permission to get Medicaid reimbursement. We had twenty families we had to get, and we got them all. So we've been working really hard on that, and I, and I, it's really coming back. I mean, it's directly why we have Eureka Math this year. There's no other answer to that.
Is this, is this a, Jim or Jen, is this a standalone, one article, a town meeting?
So they do it with all the revolving accounts in, in that one, and they just increase the, they, they just put the cap on there.
Okay.
And when you go and knock on doors, you get the signature, that lasts for how long?
Their entire time within the North Andover Public Schools.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure everybody understands that, 'cause that's-
It used to be every year.
That's, that's-
Right.
That's what, yeah.
I thought that changed like two years ago or something.
Right.
And for the families that you don't necessarily have that, is that part of like an IEP meeting that you may have with parents where you would request it?
So there are a very small number of families who refuse to give it to us.
Okay.
And, and for, each of them for different reasons.
Sure.
And so frankly, that's all we got left at this point.
Okay. All right.
But we use a lot of different opportunities through council.
But we keep going back at an IEP.
We'll use every opportunity. So, you know, when we get to the end and we have to go knocking on the doors, those are the folks that truly need a little more explanation usually, or it's something they put aside and it's on the fridge and-
Right.
But it is the life, I mean, it's the lifeblood to what we do with curriculum. I mean, it is.
Right.
So just, just for the mechanics again of it, this would be a recommendation by the town manager and the FinCom in the revolving account line item, and we're gonna be asking them for 450, but that's-
With an understanding that we only get to spend what comes back.
Exactly.
But we're just asking them to increase the cap, because we are gonna get more than $250,000. And we'd like to-
You can look at him when you talk.
We are gonna get more than $250,000.
I have a question there.
So, I hope that makes sense. It's, it's really a technical change.
Thank you, thank you.
Just a silly question. So if we get, for example, 300-
Yes.
And we have a cap of 250, the other 50 goes into the town?
No, it stays in the fund, because it's a revolving fund, but we can't access it until the following fiscal year.
Until the following year, and so that year, if we got 200-
Then we could access it all.
Then we could access the full 250.
But if we got 250, it would, we would never be able to get to it.
Cause you'd be after 300, yeah.
Right. Okay.
So I think the, the idea of this was to spend whatever we got in in the year, and this is just the mechanics to allow us to do it.
Right. For some reason, I think I was confusing this with, and I'm, I'm gonna probably say it wrong, but the special education-
Stabilization.
Where we could get, I'm gonna say it wrong, but I think 150 a year, no more than 402 or so. I mean, it was like a funny way of doing the math.
So the max in one year was 250, and the max in a two-year period was 400.
400, that's right. Okay.
But again, this is totally different.
Totally, right. But I was thinking, when I was looking at the numbers, I was thinking that, that they were, they're similar enough that I was confusing how the, the funds got allocated. But that-
But the, the stabilization fund is town funds that were used, right?
Yes.
This is outside reimbursement that's coming in and being held within the town coffers for us to access.
Right. And there's no two-year cap, which is what I was trying to-
Correct. Yeah. The only cap is how much money we bring back in.
Right, right. Okay. I'm good now. Thank you.
Okay. So the ECC librarian, we are gonna have a librarian in the new building. Yay, Mr. Tracy, yay. And so we are recommending to have a halftime librarian at the ECC. We are recommending that rather than go to the, to increase our, our spending, we're actually gonna reallocate $27,500, which is halftime librarian, from our technology budget. We feel very, very comfortable with this for a number of reasons. A, we have made incredible progress in technology. And B, in the capital improvement plan for FY20, a year out, the number, amount of money that is allocated is currently $100,000. It jumps to $200,000 around technology resources. So we feel confident this will not put us behind in any way. I wanna make a, a comment. I did change this slightly from when it was printed, and, and I had a long conversation today with Kathleen Keenan from Stevens Memorial Library, so I wanna highlight something for you. We may make a decision to have the halftime Atkinson librarian and the halftime ECC librarian be the same person. Currently, that halftime Atkinson librarian is halftime at Stevens and halftime at Atkinson.
Right.
We also may make the decision to actually have two shared librarians that are halftime at the Stevens and halftime at the ECC and halftime at Atkinson. That model has incredible benefits, not the, the least of which is halftime is over a fifty-two-week period. So we actually get these librarians more than halftime on a weekly basis during the school year. So it actually increases the amount than, more than halftime. On top of that, our relationship with Stevens has been fantastic. Let me just give you one quick example. I said, "So Kathleen, we're gonna have a library, and there's not gonna be anything in it." And she said, "Oh, no, no, no. I have two to three thousand books, pre-K to K, to help you start your library." It's just amazing. And she said, "Jen, we're looking to get rid of them. Our, we have two, our, our old librarian used to buy two of every picture book, and we're just gonna have one, and we would love to give them to you." So, I mean, that's a wonderful example of our partnership. And you know, we've talked a lot about our partnership with Stevens. It's just fantastic. And then, you know, on, on top of that, I love the concept in some respects Kathleen and I spoke. Wouldn't it be great if every kid in the North Andover Public Schools started their public school experience knowing a Stevens Memorial Librarian?
Mm-hmm.
Right? If at the K, we had an, a shared librarian, that means every kid goes into the child's room and knows the person who has been at, at the, at the ECC. So-
That's what I thought.
So we're, we're gonna think about that. I, I will tell you, the biggest hurdle to that is, is, is hiring somebody who's wanting to do both of those. It's rare to find somebody who wants, there's school librarians, and there are librarians, to find somebody who wants to do that. So really, I think the biggest impediment to that is hiring. Talk to-
They're both in high domain.
Yeah. So, we'll see. But I, I don't wanna tie us into one answer to that, so I, I wanted to-
It's exciting ideas.
Highlight that. I did change that within the budget now that is published. And then the last thing is something that Mr. Gilligan and I have talked quite a lot about. We, we have put on there, and we continue to come back to, and it's also in the Looking Forward section. We have not, one of the places we have to get better at is our EL support. Currently, our EL support is done almost exclusively by tutors. And over time, we need to have ELL teacher, EL teachers. It's, it's just where we need to go as a district. We cannot afford it within this budget this year. It really does need to be, and you see in the Looking Forward section, we really need to start adding at least one EL teacher every year. And, and you really do need to put that, I think, in next year's budget. The other thing is, we, because the EL tutors are not in a union, we actually have not increased their pay rate in-
It's been over a decade. They have to be trained by EL teachers. We pay them as tutors, and the incredible hardship is the turnover. Because as soon as they get really good here, and we have a couple who've been here a long time and have, haven't had a pay raise in over ten years, but then we have others that, soon as another job opens up, we lose them. And the consistency for the kids who need the most consistency, that's where we need the teachers. So they currently, for the last decade, maybe longer, have been making 28, 79 an hour. And Dr. Price, if you want, we propose to go, at a cost of about fourteen, seven, to go to $32 an hour next year.
And our, our plan is to play, pay that for the funds that we get through bringing in our international students through the Cambridge Institute. It makes a lot of sense. Lots of districts use those funds for EL support. And you'll see, actually, if we go forward to the, the Looking, the Looking Forward section that I talked about, we're actually, we're actually gonna recommend, can you skip ahead to, Jim, just 'cause I'm on that and then come back? We're also actually gonna recommend that over time, in the next few years, you actually increase that from 32 to 43, 34 to 36, and that you gradually, 'cause 36 is much more competitive of where we should be hiring these tutors. We're also gonna recommend that you should plan to add one certified EL teacher to the budget for each of the next three years. We do need about three certified EL teachers in the district. And again, we need to be thoughtful and planful, as we've done with elementary classroom teachers. But this is something we, it, it really is not, it's not a discussion anymore. It's just gotta get done. And Mr. Gilligan, as the EL coordinator in the district, will be a great advocate for this.
Yeah, I mean, we've been, we're very fortunate to have the dedicated and talented people, the mainstays that we've had at the middle school and at the elementary, and Marion Mako, the one teacher that we currently have, because most of our kids test out by the time they get to middle school. But we have seen a, a much bigger influx of kids at the high school and the middle school as well.
I was just gonna ask that, yeah.
You know, currently, we have about a hundred kids that receive services, and they speak over thirty different languages.
But they could be anywhere K to 12, like they could show up as a junior.
They could be anywhere K to 12. I will say the majority of our kids typically used to be at Thompson and Atkinson, and we're seeing a shift in that as well. I mean, you know, that we see more kids at the Sargent School that need support, and more kids at the Franklin School, and at the Kittredge as well. So as that, as those needs increase, you know, I think there's definitely going to be that need to have people that are in here for the long term to service those kids, particularly at the secondary level.
So the short-term plan is to stabilize the tutor rate, and the long-term plan is to hire more ELL, EL teachers.
Is there a way through our PD plan that we could encourage some of our teachers to get dual certification, so elementary and EL?
So I'm glad you asked that. So the state actually asked us to have about fifty-eight teachers trained with the EL endorsement, which is very rigorous. It's like a-
It's, I used to work in that field.
You know, it's a three-credit college course. It's over fifteen sessions. And our teacher at the Atkinson is actually one of the state trainers, and that was a course run by the state. We have close to a hundred now with the EL endorsement.
Well, that's great.
So we were lucky. The second piece is, all educators, regardless whether you have an EL student or not, have to have fifteen PDPs and EL or SEI training, Sheldon, English, SEI-
English immersion, yeah.
English immersion. Thank you, Chair Mabey. Every recycling certification, every certification cycle. So we have put together an online module, not only in EL, but also special education or curriculum design to meet the needs of all learners. That's, so you need thirty PDPs. We've actually created our own in conjunction with Lynnfield Public Schools, and that's been offered to teachers. And at this point, we have about a hundred and thirty teachers who have completed that module.
Can you sell it to other districts?
It's self-paced, so this is being recorded. We do, it is very helpful.
We have bartered.
We've bartered.
That's good.
So it's very helpful in this sense. For example, I'll give you a good, so our Title II money is our professional development money. So a really good example is, St. Mike's gets a portion of that money, because they have students that live in North Andover. And as taxpayers in North Andover, they're entitled under federal law to, to get money. But they also have teachers that wanna be, they want certified teachers there that have to keep this up. So that's an ability for us to provide that service at a small fee. We're not making money, but we're not expending as much money as that's spent going out on conferences. So that's been good. We've also been able to work with other districts that have, you know, traded us some skillful teacher books and some other things. So it's helpful. I did think about that angle early on, but we're not, you know, we're in the business of sharing this.
That's right. That's right. Yeah, we're an open source. Okay, does that EL make sense to folks?
Just one question that, so, so these tutors could be assigned anywhere from a tenth grader to a second grader?
Yeah.
Depending on where the need is.
Yeah, we do have them by, by school.
By school.
Okay.
But they, you know, the real issue is, they have to be a certified teacher, and oftentimes, it's very difficult to find a certified teacher to fill it. So we have people working to get that certification. And the turnover, as of late, it's multiple people.
But you just don't know where people are gonna appear either, oftentimes.
Yeah, majority's elementary.
Kids.
Majority's elementary, but I, there has been an increase, you know, the high school used to be four or five kids a year, and the middle school, four or five kids a year, and now they're both around eleven or twelve each.
Well, you can just look at what, I mean, what's happened from just storms, brought people here, right?
So hopefully, you understand the multiple-pronged approach-
Yeah, thank you.
-to do this, to stabilize this.
So I get that they're, they haven't done this, a pay increase in ten plus years or so, but is there, I'm, I'm not exactly sure how that happened or why that happened. So I'm not really comfortable with that. But is there anything where we could, is there any benefit to them and to us to, to somehow tie them into some form of, I don't know, when, when we evaluate the, making it up, like one of the unions, I'm not sure which one, right?
So once they become t-
That it's kind of on our radar.
Once they become teachers, that, that will happen. So again, the short-term plan is to stabilize the tutor rate and to get it higher.
Yeah.
And the longer-term plan is to move as many of those to certified teachers, and then they become part of the union.
And then they'll just automatically be in that one, so they'll be covered with that. Okay, all right.
Correct. But again, you know, within the confines of, of the budget proposal, and I say it, I was unable to address this at the level I would want to, other than this pay increase, which I think will be well-received, since they haven't had one in a long time. But that being said, we do have a plan moving forward.
Okay. I, I like that they'll move into the teachers. Okay. I like that they'll move into the teachers.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Okay, just some other things looking forward. Elementary classroom size, so, so a few things. You know, the chart that I so love here that we talked about a few weeks ago. This budget does get us to the 15% mark, so we would be on the yellow line. We are not gonna have to reallocate any of our K. 5, sorry, our 1.5 teachers to the ECC. Which was actually a concern that I had going into this budget, but we were able to get where we needed to. So, this gets us to the 15%. I do wanna let you know that we are not gonna be able to backfill any of our vacated classrooms as a result of this. Again, within the confines of the budget, as our focus really does need to be on staffing the new ECC. So, yet, my anticipation is next year, you will be, be able to backfill a number of those classrooms. So, as we talked a number of years ago, for those of you who are here, when you think about elementary class size, we had two issues. Space and teachers. And I kept saying, you can give me as many teachers as you want, but I have nowhere to put them. We have made a significant progress. We were at 53%. We should be at 15% above the, the school committee guidelines. But we are not recommending backfilling any of those classrooms.
Right.
Next year, I would anticipate that Mr. Gilligan and team will be making recommendations to backfill those classrooms. It will be a little tricky next year to have potentially empty classrooms in some of our, in some of our schools. Many of those classrooms will be used for student supports. I mean, we've got, you know, special educators working in hallways. And so, libraries that aren't, you know, so I think those rooms will be used. We're not gonna really have empty classrooms.
That'll vary from principal to principal.
And, and each school is different. I mean, Atkinson, there is not a place for anything, right? Sergeant may have an empty classroom or two. So, it's all just gonna depend. So, I just wanna be very clear, although we are gonna reallocate, so there may be, there may be some reallocation that happens. And I've been very straightforward about that. So, you know, the thing I would say is that it's important to understand that this budget does not, and we had talked about wanting to backfill. This does not. And we have, we're making progress on our goal. Each year, we're making progress on our goal. And as we want to reduce elementary class size, we have eliminated, starting next year, one of the major hurdles we had, which was space.
But also, to be clear, while you're not gonna be allocating new teachers to backfill, you're not gonna take away any of the teachers you've added over the last two years.
We are not taking away any of the teachers we've added, including the one that the teacher, where the principals pooled their funds. We've actually rolled that into the budget, so, so we are continuing. And I think it's really important, so here's the, the class size average, we're not taking away.
Right.
So, I was very pleased to be able to present the new ECC appropriately staffed without having to take anything from the elementary classrooms. I was not confident at the beginning of this process that we were gonna be able to get there. I'm very excited we did. Okay? And then, middle school class size. So, I, you know, I continue to beat this drum and I'm sorry if it's a bit much. Our largest average class sizes, 4.9 kids higher than the state average. And all of our comparable districts, we are the largest middle school class sizes and elementary, as you saw in the data I presented. We really need to add, in order to really do it, we would need to add 14 classroom teachers along with special education supports to the middle school. I do wanna remind you that we talked about adding a similar number of elementary teachers and we're almost there. So, it's not an undoable goal. I do see it as the next goal for this, this school committee. And similarly, as we've done at the elementary level, we have two impediments to that. One is operating budget and two is, is building. And so, we're gonna continue to go at both of those impediments. And I just, you know, I love that Mr. McDebitz said, when we named the track, we never thought we'd be naming a building. And now, we're naming a building.
Right.
So, what may seem like a Herculean task, we've demonstrated we can do. And I fundamentally believe this town can do it again here at the middle school. So, I wanna keep this on everybody's radar, that this is kind of the next big thing here in North Andover. And I know that Mr. Gilligan understands and knows that. I know that the middle school is doing an excellent job within the constraints that we have. And in order to be able to address a significant issue at the middle school, we've got a lot of work to do. Okay, and then the last thing, we've talked about EL, is part of the strategic plan has also been the leadership structure. So, if you remember, and we had Ms. Caffrey Swingy here talking to us. We have significantly changed the leadership structure at the high school this year and I hope you heard that some of the early returns are quite good on that. We talked about doing the same for next year in this year's budget at the middle school. We've made the decision under Mr. Mealy's leadership, he's really been the one spearheading this as part of the strategic plan, to wait for the new principal to make those, that decision. Is that...
We actually have had meetings and developed some options, but we thought it made sense, given that we're not going to be trying, making any recommendations for this coming budget. And we also have a new principal coming in to have that principal work with the team and kind of refine those options that we bring forward for the next budget cycle.
I also like that just because they'll, I'm assuming everybody you're interviewing is not from here already. So, they'll come in with no preconceived notions and I think there's something refreshing about that too.
And again, within the confines of the budget, we were not gonna have any additional money to put at this, if it needs additional support. So, that will be a move that we'll move to the FY '20. And then we've also said, you know, in order to not hold up the elementary leadership structure conversation, they've been having those conversations too. So, rather than doing what we had done, which was the high school one year, the middle school one year, the elementary, we'll probably do the middle and the elementary the same year. You know, and just to be very clear, I think the Thompson, I think the Atkinson Elementary School is within nine students of the Franklin Elementary School right now. One has an assistant principal, one doesn't.
Mr. Clark mentioned today that Mr. Landry took a lead briefly with four additional students. But with direct move-ins and move-outs, Franklin is now back ahead.
But, we have an assistant principal. Yes, and it's all gonna change it. And, and so, we really need to think about the leadership structure at the elementary level too. So, I would assume, and I know Mr. Mealy has really taken us on, that will be part of the FY '20 budget conversation. So, I only talk about these issues to talk about it. I feel that, I feel like this budget has done a lot. I'm very excited about the fact that I think we will be opening up the new ECC with the supports that we need. And I think the looking forward section was really to talk about what we were not able to do in this budget. But, you know, I do wanna take kind of a bit of a 40,000-foot look at all of this. We have been able to do a lot and we have been able to do a lot in a thoughtful, very kind of strategic way. And there's lots more to do, but I do think, I think the middle school is the biggest juggernaut to kind of moving forward. But I do really think it's doable and I think it all starts with hopefully MSBA accepting North Andover into the pipeline at some point in the next few years. Okay, Mr. Mealy.
So, this is the summary and I just wanna highlight a few things. One being, when you look at this, this is at the top, level services. And you can see some consistency in there where elementary, high school, and middle school, all around the same percentage increases. Mostly because that's heavily populated by teachers and the increases that they're going to see. You'll see regarding maintenance and technology, we did not cut maintenance and technology. In addition to getting additional funding every year, we continue to work with the town manager on ways that we might be able to move some money out of or some expenses out of our budget into the consolidated that we have with our technology and facilities. And that's what we've been able to do in this regard, where if you take a look at the detail of the budgets, which we'll review very quickly after the presentation, there's zero in the budget for sewer, water and sewer. Those expenses have been moved to facilities, so we're not having to pay those out of the school budget anymore. And then with technology, similarly, some of our directors, all of our IT people except the director are funded through the consolidated IT department. And more of the director salaries being moved into the consolidated. And that's why you see that there as well. So, you can see that level services in that case, with those expenses going out, came to 2.81%, as Jen mentioned earlier. And then, all of the items she talked about with regards to proposed increases are the 3.99, 3.12, for a total increase of 3.65%.
And then the last piece is, as we did last year, and I think people appreciated it, how each of our proposed increases fit into our strategic plan. We need to talk anymore about that, but it is really part of kind of how we're trying to move the district forward.
Great, Ms. Chubb, thank you.
Very, very thorough.
Just for those who are also at home, there's a lot of other backup data about our comparable districts and all those things that I invite you to look at. I don't think we need to go through all of it, but there's a lot of other data available.
And along those lines, the budget chiefs that you do see in the books and you see online are in different formats. One being the one you just saw, which talks about the, the different programs that we have and the percentage increases to those. And then the detail behind that, for those who like to see it, are in the following one. So, you'll see district-wide in the overall amount, but then you see every single line item in that program. And then the last one that we've done is just some people like to see, not just by school or by program, but by category or account description, as we call it. So, how much are we spending across the district in conferences and meetings or contracted services or those other items? And you see that as well. We've made the offer every year since I've been here, that if you wanna see it in a different format, it's easy enough to do. We can, it's just pivot tables with the data. And I've never been taken up on that offer, but...
Well, you've given so many options, so...
Wants to see it, they can. But that's what you see when you look through the budget sheets. And then, as Jen mentioned, there are other links within this document for the data. And then we'll continue to, if we change anything, if we add another presentation. You know, we'll do a FinCom presentation, we'll have that one included as well. So, those are all there.
So, one, one thing I do wanna highlight is in the elementary, in the class sizes, it's always, please pay attention if you're looking at it to the year. So, we're always a year or so behind. So, kind of our progress on class size at the elementary isn't necessarily reflected. We're moving there. We still, based on the data we have, have the largest among of our comparable districts of elementary class size. But it doesn't reflect the movement we've been able to make in the last year. So, just, I hope next year, when this is presented, you'll see some movement there.
I was actually, just quickly on the comparable districts, shocked to see some of our neighboring towns, the number of students that they've lost.
Right, yes.
Were, but some of them were like 4, 5, 600 students. I mean, I think we're up, I forget what it was now, I wanna say like 120 or something like that, but I'm shocked by that.
Yeah, and you know, again, I keep telling you that, and I don't mean to redo it, but when you talk about per pupil spending and you talk about class size, there's a numerator issue and a denominator issue, right? And so, our numerator has gone up when a lot of other districts have gone down. So, even if their spending has changed at the same rate that ours has, if, for instance, Tewksbury, who's lost 502 kids, if their denominator has stayed the same, then all of a sudden, it looks like there's been a significant change in terms of their per pupil spending and their average class sizes, for instance. So, you know, you do want a stable community where people are coming in, luckily, not at a very massive rate, but at a rate into, into North Andover. But lots of other districts are losing kids. And so, as we are trying to reduce class sizes, increase, you know, our spending, we're doing so without, and I hate to use the word, but without the benefit, and that's not the right word, but without the impact, that's a better word, of the numerator changing.
Yeah. The other thing that was really interesting too is some of them that I know have built new schools or...
Yes.
And they're very high. They're higher than we are with brand-new schools. So, it's almost decreasing populations of brand-new school and high class sizes. I'm like...
Yeah.
Baffling. So, this is, this is, it's helpful, as much as we're trying to push it down, to just see that, those comparisons. So, I, I mean, it doesn't drive me in terms of what we wanna spend, but it puts it into perspective.
And I do wanna remind you that when we look at these comparable districts in terms of achievement, we're right there. We're right in the middle, if not above the average, which is impressive, given that our spending is below average in almost every area.
Right.
One thing that strikes me, we've talked a lot about elementary and middle school class sizes. Our high school class sizes, and it's, it's a strange number to report, because I'm not sure how average class size really works when we have band and chorus with 100 kids and, you know, AP classes with 18. But it, but it does make me want to wonder, you know, at some other point in time, if those are numbers that we need to look more closely at and in our planning ahead.
Yeah, we do agree with that.
In terms of course offerings, Jen.
Yeah. It's definitely, you know, as the progression moves, I would be stunned if that's not a conversation in two or three years. But it just in terms of, wow.
Right.
It was not the first place to start.
Right, got that.
Right.
Truly excellent, all of you, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the committee?
Great, thank you.
Really great. I would say, if you do have any questions that emerge between now and next Thursday, if you could give us a little bit of lead time on them. If there's something specifically you wanna see or something that would be helpful for us to comment on some more, please let us know and we'll come prepared. We don't plan to prepare anything else unless asked.
So, like 5 o'clock Thursday is more than enough?
That's plenty of time for, for Mr. Mealy. I'd like 4 o'clock Thursday for me, please.
And when are you presenting to the finance committee?
The 23rd.
23rd, okay. Great. Any public comment this evening? You may. We'd be disappointed if you didn't.
I was looking at the clock.
I almost, I'm about to get ousted as chair, just so you know, because of that, so...
It's interesting, because at the Board of Select meeting, the, Mr. Tracy's role is played by our assistant town manager, Ray Santilli. Who is like the, oh, man, sit down.
Now, definitely.
So, I just, I'm here, Stanley, 43 Stone Cleve Road, North Andover.
Thank you.
I'm here in my role as a trustee of the Stevens Memorial Library. And I just wanted to echo some comments that Dr. Price had made about how wonderful that relationship has been over the last several years and how we have really appreciated being called upon to be able to help in public education here in North Andover in a way that it's not clear that the library's ever been asked in that way in, in recent memory to participate. And we were, we were concerned about the dilemma that you're facing about, you know, staffing for libraries. And it was nice to hear what you had to say this evening about the fact that, you know, it'd be nice to continue that relationship and really have that interface where a teacher is working in the library and in the school. So, that'd be wonderful if you can get that to work out. Would really like to do everything we can to continue that relationship. A couple of quick comments. I thought it was interesting, your comment about six consensus budgets in a row. Is it coincidental that that's when our current town manager started about? I'm just saying. And I wanted to, again, applaud you and of course, the, the amazing Mike Grant for all the progress in technology. That's, whoever thought we'd have 2,130 or whatever you said, it never was.
2,190, yeah.
Amazing number. Whoever thought that would happen? And the only other suggestion I would have is, in addition to the trips for the groups that you mentioned, how about having the music people come in when they have a significant trip and give you a report on that?
Or performance.
Yeah, or a performance, yeah, just, just for fun, you know, just to see what they have to say about what they learned and how much fun they had and what was good about their trips. They've had some significant trips too.
They sure have.
It'd be good. Thank you.
We had the robotics.
That's right, come in.
The balls being thrown at me.
They were shooting balls at everybody. You couldn't catch them passing out.
I caught a lot, but not that many.
They could've sung "Happy Birthday" to my sisters.
Tim Sheehart, 283 Campbell Road. I've come prepared with, excuse me, scroll, about 231. I did come prepared though, and I sort of set the tone for the meeting with the FinCom. And you address it probably more strongly in a single type of area, and that is the classroom size and filling of the classrooms. And that seems to be one of our bigger concerns strategically over the next several years. How do we achieve that goal? And from the little that I heard tonight relative to the stuff behind the scenes you're able to do to find other monies, you're able to plug away at getting a teacher here or a teacher there, and that's great. But we're very much concerned about how do we do it bigger and faster. So, I'd like to be able to have that as a discussion with the FinCom meeting. I also, it's possible to quantify some of the savings that have come your way over the last couple of years from the shifting of costs between town and school budgets. And that's pretty much it.
As you know, both myself and Mr. Miller will be at the 23rd meeting, so we'll both be there to have that conversation.
Super. The last thing that did come up, we did have a series of questions, but this isn't a question, this is comments. It's the lack of our understanding and just maybe there about capital improvements for the existing schools. And it sort of struck home when $284,000 in Atkinson roof repair went away. And it was a long discussion with Ray and Lynn about the process of how we got there. But now, it's that immediate need for a roof has now been pushed out five or six or seven years. It's like, oh, okay. So, we're interested in what is the plan for renovating the schools? And again, it's not current year budget, but it is something that we look at relative to the long-term capital improvement.
Yeah, and just to remind folks at home that, you know, we did, as part of the K. building, look at the renovations that we're gonna need at Franklin and at Atkinson and at Kittredge. And we have been working pretty closely with the town manager about a plan for that under Facilities Master Plan 2, so we're happy to address it.
Okay, that's all I have.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks for being here tonight.
And just to end my budget presentation, I just got a text from Mary Lou Connors, "It's all getting so exciting."
Wow, that's great.
The budget of the school.
The budget to support... The budget to support the school, right?
Who said that, to Holly?
Would anybody on the committee like to make any comments before we move on? End of the meeting comments? No news, no song and dance, okay? Then I would certainly, oh, any of the rest of you? No? Entertain a motion to enter executive session to conduct strategy in preparation for negotiations for the superintendent of schools, as well as the North Andover professional...
I think we're not doing the North Andover professional group, so...
Oh, you have not, so just, thank you, so we are not doing that, thank you, I will strike that.
Yep.
We will just be meeting to discuss the superintendent contract.
So, move.
Second.
Mr. Trissey and Mr. McDevitt, Mr. Trissey?
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you very much, meeting adjourned, appreciate it. Everyone, have a lovely evening.